All right. We're on.
All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Tuesday, August the 18th Agenda Session. Could I have approval of the minutes, please?
I moved.
Thank you.
Okay, with no objection, the minutes will stand as recorded. We have several planning items on final reading for this afternoon. Do we have any questions? They've been read into the minutes. I'm not going to go through each one unless somebody has questions about a particular one. Councilman Ledford.
Yes, sir. I want to thank the council for their patience in referring the case on Schallerford. I've been working intently with the Waterside Development and the applicant to work out an agreement in consideration for possible future changes to Napier Drive there and possibly the turning lane on Schallerford. So in conversations with T dot, C dot, and the applicant and Waterside, we have a condition that has been agreed upon that I will be presenting tonight that will move that case forward. And I think you'll hear hopefully from the applicant and your most, most certainly welcome to make sure that they are okay with the, the condition. But I think we are finally there and I just want to thank the council for their patience.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other items on final reading? What we need to address? If not, ordinance says on first reading, we have a couple of planning items. Councilman Ledford, have all of these been read into the minute, sir?
I believe that is correct, sir.
Okay. Anybody with questions about items on first reading under planning? Okay, I see no hands. We'll drop down to resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read seven A, please?
A res- a resolution authorizing the mayor or his designated enter into an agreement to exercise option to renew with the Forgotten Child Fund Incorporated and substantially the form attached for the lease of approximately nineteen thousand five hundred and sixteen square feet of warehouse space at eighteen fifteen East Main Street, identified as tax map number one five six B D zero zero nine for a term of six months for the amount of one dollar.
Councilman Byrd and then Councilman Gilbert. I think you must be muted, sir. We don't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Uh, I was wanting to go back up if it's possible to be under, uh, items of first reading, uh, would feel that alternate version?
Yes, sir.
We have that in, in the alternate versions that is going to read so that it will remain one lot and not be divided?
Yes, sir. Uh, the, the only change that I made at your request that the lot, uh, that this ordinance will be subject to the condition of a single family to tax uses on the one lot designated as tax map number one forty-six O F O one O only.
Okay, and that will allow the owner of this lot to do, uh, they could do an accessory dwelling unit but could not divide the lot up and create a whole another address and house on that lot, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And that's it, thank you, Chair.
All right. Councilman Gilbert, uh, question or comment on seven A?
Yes, sir. Uh, I don't recall that when Forgotten Child came and another organization that will say this will be finding a permanent home. This is just a lease of six months to extend it. Where are we at with finding them a permanent home?
Well, sir, I don't have an answer for that. If, uh, someone from the administration would like to raise their hand and take a stab at that. Carrie Hayes, Ms. Lydia? Let's see if he has an answer for us. Good afternoon, Mr. Hayes.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I was muted for a second. Uh, Councilman, I'm, I'm happy to find and answer your question. I'm, I'm need to check with Tyler to see exactly where we are in that process. Uh, I know that, uh, there was a rezoning of that property a couple of weeks ago at the Planning Commission, which was another important step to keep that all moving forward. So, uh, the exact timing by which we will need to have found a new permanent home for them, I don't have off the top of my head, but I'll be glad to find it for you by, uh, by this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chair.
All right, hold on, let me switch back over. Uh, Councilman Byrd, do you have another question on this item?
Yes, sir. And, uh, with that item, it was also a letter, uh, that was sent out that talked about that we were going to stop funding also the other program that was there with the Furniture Bank and that process. And I know this had to do with us. Uh, we have been discussing this probably a year ago or six months ago when it came to the AIM Center, Facino Group about that piece of land that we have on Main Street and, uh, we were going to relocate both of these places. Uh, and I was just wondering, uh, have we found anything for both or just the one right now and has that, how is it looking for both places?
Mr. Hayes?
Councilman, I didn't, I would need to take a look at the letter that you're referring to, to, to make sure I'm answering the question, uh, accurately. I'm, I'm not quite sure I'm, I'm aware of what you're speaking of, but it looks like, perhaps Donna Williams might have the answer if you want to tag her in, in my place.
All right.
Ms. Lydia, will you bring in Ms. Williams, please? Good afternoon, Ms. Williams.
I'm muting.
There you go. You got it.
Thank you very much. Um, the agreement with, with both of those tenants was that the city would assist them with relocating their operations and, uh, through work that Tyler Yant has done, um, those entities have, have identified other places that they're going to go. One is going to take their operation into facilities that they already had. And, uh, and you're right, Councilman Byrd, it is, uh, that they are, have previously been using eighteen fifteen East Main Street. Uh, it, I don't, it's not entirely accurate to say we have, we're, we have been funding them. We have, uh, extended to them the same lease that we have typically with all nonprofits, which is, um, the use of the building for a dollar a year.
Okay.
And then any additional funding that either organization may or may not have, I have to look at the budget, would be through the BFO process.
Awesome, and thank you so much for clearing it up because the, the language that was put out was that we had been and now we're not, but the dollar a year for them to be in that facility and the word was said that we were going to assist them in moving somewhere else due to the fact that, uh, we were gonna do, uh, some different things with that location. Correct?
Yeah, and, and, um, uh, Carrie said I had the answer, but now his, his previous answer probably has more of what you're specifically asking for, which is the city assisted, um, the Forgotten Child Fund with additional funding.
Yes.
Other than finding another locate, another city-owned property for which they could rent for a dollar.
Gotcha.
And we can, we can get the, the specificity of that, uh, from, from Tyler.
Specific, okay, thank you so much, Miss Donna.
Did that, did that answer your question?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
All right.
All right, we're good? Let me switch back over. Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Carrie, are you still on?
Yes, sir.
Did you say that this was a rezoning of part of a solution that's coming for Planning Commission next month?
Uh, no, sir, it was, uh, at PC last month.
Last month, okay. Do you, do you recall what case it was?
I don't recall the case number.
I can go back through my notes.
Yeah.
Try to figure it out. And would that be for the Forgotten Child Fund or Furniture Bank or both? Or are they going to split up?
It was a reason, as I understand it, and, uh, and, and I may need Tyler to check my homework here. It was a, it was a rezoning to, uh, to permit the Facino Group, uh, AIM Center Project to move forward on that site. A rezone was a, was a condition of some of the financing that they were seeking.
That, that's correct.
Okay, so it's not a rezoning to, for a new location for?
No, sir, the, the building at eighteen fifteen East Main Street, um, part of it, the parts been, part of the building has been used at for, um, warehouse for the city, part for the forgotten child fund, et cetera. Um, that building, in order for the new project to move forward, needs to be rezoned. And so that was, that was, that happened at the Plan Commission.
No, I'm good with that, yeah, I remember that. I, I, I thought I understood the new location was, was under rezoning, so we have no.
No, sir.
Okay, that's what I misunderstood, thank you for that. So we don't have a new location, but they will probably be split up?
Yes, they're two different entities, they would be split up and, and one is going to a facility that they already have. They're moving their operation into an existing facility of theirs.
Okay.
And then, yes.
Do you know if that is the Forgotten Child? I'm assuming that it is.
It's the Furniture Bank, is my understanding.
Furniture Bank has a, they're moving into their location?
They have a, yes, sir.
Okay.
And we can, we can get you a little one pager from Tyler if that would be helpful.
I would love to see it, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, any other questions concerning seven? Well, seven A? If not, we will move on. Ms. Lydia, I see Stan Sewell on here as well. Did you bring Stan in?
Not that I know of.
Okay. All right, I think you can excuse our guest at this time.
Okay.
And we will read seven B.
Okay. A resolution authorizing the Chief Information Officer to enter into an agreement with the Application Software Technology LLC regarding statements of work relating to the Master Service Agreement for ERP, Oracle Implementation Hosting Maintenance and Support Services, multi-year implementation for fiscal years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five for an amount not to exceed nine point six million, subject to appropriation of funds.
Okay, Vice Chair Smith. You're muted, sir.
Got it.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so this is, this is a, call it a, a project that's been going on for a while and, and discussions and by, for a while, um, for me, a little over seven years. So we are now to the point, um, that I feared us getting to seven years ago, which is, um, do it or else, uh, from a vendor, uh, which is something I'm not a big fan of. So, uh, I would like to ask Mr. Messer a few questions. Ms. Lydia, if you can find him over on the attendee side and bring him in, please.
Brent Messer, Ms. Lydia.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hey Brent, can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. All right, uh, hey Brent, would you just kind of kick us off? I mean, this is pretty substantial, it's bigger than anything we've ever talked about before, uh, with this particular system even over the years. So can you just give us a quick rundown of what we're doing, why we're doing it this way? It's a five-year deal, almost ten million dollars, won't even be implemented for another year. Just kind of give us the, just the top level view down and then I've got a few follow-up questions as, as my colleagues probably do as well, sir.
Sure, uh, well, to start with, an RFP is a resource, uh, enterprise, or not the RFP, sorry, the ERP is the Enterprise Resource Planning Software. It's, uh, basically contains everything for the city, the financials, budget, investment management, HR, purchasing, retiree tracking, benefits, et cetera. Every major, uh, uh, operation has one from government to private sector. Now, we started, um, to, to go through this process, um, last year with an RFP. We actually hired a third party, uh, I believe they were, I can't remember the name off the top of my head. They, they put together the RFP for us, taking all our business requirements from every one of the stakeholders throughout the city, uh, including all the IT requirements for security, et cetera. And then they filtered through that, um, we had, I think, eleven proposals that came through and they narrowed it down to the four finalists. The Business Subject Matter Experts, which are all the, the stakeholders for the city, they looked over all the solutions proposed and we sat through solutions, uh, looking for what meets the best needs, basically. And, uh, with several all-day presentations. And then.
Sorry, go ahead, I thought you were done.
Oh, yeah, no, and then we, uh, and then we voted, all the, the stakeholders voted on it and, uh, all the scores were tallied up and then Oracle was the one that came out on top as best meeting the needs and, um, that's what was chosen.
So the, the other part of my question, the why, like, why are we having to do this at this point?
We are in a state right now where we must, uh, either move off our, our current platform. We are in a, a hosted, managed hosted solution. It used to be an on-prem solution, an on-premise solution. We're needing to move to a SaaS solution, uh, or we want to move to a SaaS solution. But the why is because we're on a, an extended contract now, where we, actually, we don't have a contract, uh, where we've extended our, our services with them, uh, just in off time to be able to go through this RFP process and, and find another solution.
So let me, let me ask another one. So last year, um, we saw an item that was going to be presented to this council, it's about four and a half million dollars for Oracle, um, which is one I asked it to go out to RFP for a deeper dive and at evaluation. Uh, it's come back twice as much as it was last year, um, before it went out to RFP. Uh, can you tell me why, like, what, what the, what is the difference? Was that original four and a half just an extension of the in-house system? This is now a cloud-based SaaS platform? What's, why are we looking at double? And do we, do we need something this substantial, uh, to serve the needs?
I think that, um, if I'm not mistaken, I think that original pricing was misquoted, if I remember correctly. Um, I don't remember what the exact number is off the top of my head. I know it has a lot to do with the fact that we need more functionality and more features. When our current system was implemented back in, I believe, two thousand and seven or so, it was implemented not the best way, incorrectly in some ways. So, uh, a lot of the features and functionality we don't have with that, so it's definitely something we need to replace.
I'll leave off the not implemented correctly comments. No, I won't, typical Oracle, all right there. So, at this point, you're running IT, Brent. Is this the direction that the city needs to go for how we're going to move forward, knowing that they aren't going to support the current platform? Uh, again, typical Oracle, um, do it now or else we're just going to turn off, turn your systems off with no support, uh, and you're going to be forced to do something. No matter who we go to, it's going to cost a lot of money, potentially more because you've got migration and everything else in the, in the system, uh, moving to a new platform. Understanding all of that, Brent, is this the right decision for the, for the city moving forward?
This decision was based on the combined efforts of everybody that was in that RFP selection. It meets all the requirements, it can do the job. It is something that we have to do, definitely, um, and our, our, our hands are kind of tied in that aspect, uh, but we, going forward, we, we've got to do something, yes.
Okay, and then my final question, knowing this won't be implemented until the next administration, um, would there be an alternative to get us to next year and let the next administration decide whether or not this is the platform they want to move forward with?
That I could not, uh, well, I don't think so. Um, we, we need to do something soon, uh, because of that contract issue that, like you stated with, with Oracle. That's a, that's a bigger problem and there's no plan to get around that.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I, I yield for the moment if anybody else has questions.
Sure, we got, uh, Councilman Gilbert.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, in two thousand and seven, didn't Oracle suggest to the city to put this thing in place that we're trying to put in place now for as getting rid of pink slips or making sure of the payroll and, uh, management is, is communicating with each other?
I can't really speak to that because I wasn't here in two thousand and seven, um, but from my understanding, i- it's not necessarily the, uh, that it's not this, this exact platform because this platform didn't exist, this is new.
So would this eliminate pink slips and things of that nature?
What are you referring to, pink slips?
Well, when a person wants to be off, they gotta turn in a pink slip still to go in the system.
I'd almost forgotten about that, yeah, we've already eliminated that.
So this is not, not part of that at all, right?
No, it's not, it does work together with it, um, a lot better than our current system does, yes. But we've already eliminated those, those pink slips and a lot of those solutions we've done and, um, those problems that you're talking about, we've done with other things.
Okay, so in other words, we just, in a, in a buying where?
Yeah, ERP perspective, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Brent, I'm gonna take a quick swipe at this, this isn't my area of expertise, but, um, I've been talking a lot lately about obligating the next administration, so I'll, I'll try. Did, in the RFP, did we ask for the twenty-one, twenty, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five timeframe? Did we ask for that or was, was that what was proposed from Oracle?
Putting together an ERP system and implementing across an, an organization this large takes a lot of time and there's a lot of people involved, a lot of moving pieces, it's a complex project. I've put several of them in and several other different organizations and it's pretty typical for it to take about a year, maybe a year and a half to do.
Yeah, because I believe what I heard from, uh, Vice Chairman was that this is, next administration, this won't even come into effect. The, uh, other question regarding obligations for the next administration, next council is, uh, there is no other, uh, short-term patch, um, to allow the, piggyback on that question, to allow the next administration to kind of get their hands wrapped around this and, and.
Well, it's a rolling implementation, so we do it in, in stages and in phases, so it's not all done at one time.
All right, then I'll jump out of that, thanks.
Councilman Byrd?
Uh, yes, Chair, could, uh, could you also bring Tony up? I want him to, uh, it was some purchasing functions of the new system, he was wanting to explain, uh, that he briefly talked to me about, I want to see if he can come in and explain some of that to us.
Ms., Ms. Lydia, uh, Mr. Salmon's, please.
On his way.
And there he is.
Tony.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Yes, with the upgraded platform, it's going to enable not only our finance department along with HR, but also have that connectivity with our procurement activities as well. Would be able to do a better job of, uh, housing electronically, a lot of the historical data with each of our vendors, as well as information related to our RFP submissions, all those who, uh, participate. It also allows us to build, uh, with ease, a database for our diverse vendors that we're in, in desperate need of increasing. So, uh, the platform and the process that we went through will enable us to, uh, be in a better position, be able to do our job more efficiently and more effectively. And so, um, that is just from a, a high level.
Thank you.
You good, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're gonna go back around the horn, looks like. Councilman Gilbert.
Oh, that's an old hand.
That's an old hand. Vice Chair, is that a new hand?
It is.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say how no matter what it looks like outside, Tony Salmon's always has a beautiful background. Hey, um, Brent, as far as moving forward with, with the new system at this point, if we go ahead and, um, pass this, this evening, um, are we looking at needing to add IT staff to support a completely new system? Are we going to augment? Are we going to not need as many staff? Because if we're moving this thing to the cloud, we don't have all the on-prem, which takes a lot of people to manage and maintain in, in-house sometimes. Uh, is, are we going to see big differences in the IT department, uh, because of this move as well?
No, and the reason being is because we've already taken care of that. We had an entire dedicated staff to running it when it was on-premise, it's no longer on-premise, it's actually a managed solution, so we, we pay, uh, AST Oracle for them to do that.
Uh, AST, my next question. Are we going to be seeing more, uh, contracts to approve for AST to add to the nine point six million dollars we're looking at here as we have in the past with Oracle?
Uh, not that I'm aware of for this particular implementation, no.
Can I, can I get that as a no? We are not going to see any additional service contracts from AST?
Well, as far as I know, no, but.
That's part of what I'm afraid of. All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm good.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Messer? Your, uh, all minds are clear? All right, thank you, Mr. Messer.
You're welcome, sir.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to our agenda, we have no departmental reports, uh, this afternoon. Any purchasing questions? Would you pull up your purchases for tonight? We do have, uh, looks like about five purchases. Any questions for purchases of that? Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask my question now. Uh, it's really more of a question when I was reading over the information technology Canon Solutions contract or purchase, uh, for five hundred thousand dollars tonight. My question, I guess, was kind of related along the lines of post-COVID office, what that looks like for the city, um, in question that do we, are we going to be needing less physical equipment? Are, are people going to be working from home more? The, the cost for equipment, uh, hardware, I think these are scanners and, and printers and copiers and things like that. Will we see a drop in that or anticipation or are we, are we going back to business as usual? Is that expected? Because we've kind of been talking about post-COVID, um, how city government works and how some folks are, seem to be doing just fine, the city seems to be running okay from remote locations. And I'm just wondering if the administration has had any thoughts on that? And this might be a Maura question and kind of touch base with that.
Unless Maura is Jack this afternoon, which she very well could be, I'm not sure she's on the call with us. In fact.
Well, Tony, Tony might be able to answer that as well, I mean.
I'm not even seeing.
There she is.
Oh!
Hi, Maura.
Hi.
Hi, did you hear my question?
I did hear your question and I.
Did it make sense?
My son?
Did it make sense?
Yeah, earlier it did.
Um, anyway, sorry, hello, everyone. Um, yeah, so, uh, Councilman, you're, you're getting into some crystal ball, um, areas there, uh, but, but I, but we are planning for it as, you know, making A plans and B plans for, uh, for what that, uh, what post-COVID looks like. Um, but you know, over sixty percent of our workforce is still, is still out there running and gunning, so, um, and, you know, this is for, I believe it's an up to five hundred thousand for the leases off the state contract for, um, for scanning and copying equipment and this is for, this is citywide, this is for, um, the police department, the fire department's, uh, locations, DRC, um, Paul Clark Building, you know, everywhere that, um, that we are still, uh, that we're still, as I said, uh, having people there in person doing their work and, um, um, as you see Phil there in his office, uh, using, I know he's using a copying machine a whole bunch, so, um, I mean, it's, uh, there's, there may at some point be, uh, um, a skidding down on those contracts, but not seeing it right now.
Okay, so that was important, what you just said, because I think so, a lot of people think that most of the city staff is at home, working remotely, but you're saying still sixty percent are in actual facilities?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that makes sense, so that's, that, that helps help, uh, clear up that. I'll ask this again, I've asked it, uh, many times before, but do, do we have a, a way to, to track the efficiency of folks or positions and identifying them post-COVID that might be able to work remotely? And do, I mean, I know that this administration's winding down in, within its, within counting the months now, but, um, is that something that, that, that we're trying to hand off or, or any, are we gathering in any information? Data to share with the next administration?
Absolutely, we have, um, a, uh, back-to-work task force that we've, um, that has been meeting on a regular basis and administrators are keeping up with, um, with how work changes, um, when people are at home and, uh, looking at all of those things and, um, I, uh, I for one don't feel like I'm winding down, um, I don't feel like our administration is winding down, I mean, we've got.
The clock.
The clock is ticking, but there is more work to do than, than we can, than, than we can do, so.
Councilman, let me bring us back around, uh, we're, we're talking about, uh, purchasing this afternoon, so.
I'm good, Chairman, thank you.
Just kind of refocus our attention. Any other? Any other questions concerning purchasing from the council? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Just, just one thing really quick. I wanted to point out that the reason that we are not seeing bids requested or returned, sometimes we do get a TCA number, but in this case, we're, we're seeing contract numbers now, which is even better. If you notice over in the summary, it actually mentions a contract, not just necessarily that we're using a TCA contract, but actually the contract number. So I just wanted to say I was, I was appreciative to seeing even more detail on these items.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Miss.
Always.
Moving on to August 25th agenda, if you would look at next week's agenda to see if you have any questions concerning next week. We have some items on, planning items on final reading, a couple of planning items on first reading, a couple of resolutions. You got, Councilman Gilbert?
Yes. Oh, public, I guess we're, that doesn't matter. We're gonna go with this, the public works today, right? For us.
We do have a public, exciting Public Works Committee coming up.
I'll wait today.
Okay, all right. Great. All right, let me get, let me get back to my agenda. Okay, our future considerations, anything on our look ahead that you want to address at this time? I'm seeing no hands. With that, Councilman Mitchell, I'm going to turn the chair over to you for Public Works and Transportation Committee. It's my understanding that we do have a couple of reports, maybe at the end of this. Councilman Mitchell?
Riveting reports, Mr.. Riveting.
I can't wait.
All right, thank you. Could I have approval in a minute, please?
Please approve.
All right. Anybody against doing that? Okay, we'll move on then. I want to start today with transportation, if I may. Let's do this first because publicly, you know, as we go over the Public Works items and then we'll have a presentation on water quality or stormwater, if you will, from the Public Works Department. So if we can start with transportation, who's the brave one to raise their? I see one.
He's on his way.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Bailey, how you doing?
I'm doing well, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Well, great, thanks for asking, thanks for asking. We're going to start with resolutions today, 18th of August. Would you please read seven? I believe that's E.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into an agreement with Tally Construction Company Incorporated relative to contract number T15035 for construction services associated with Chestnut Street from West Fourth Street to the north of Aquarium Way and Bailey Avenue, and from east of Norfolk Southern Railroad to Dodds Avenue in the amount of $2,526,291.66 with a contingency amount of $254,620, sorry, $252,629.17 for a total amount of $2,778,920.83.
I see no hands. Okay, we'll move on, please read F.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into an agreement with Integrated Properties LLC relative to contract number T20012 for construction services associated with the Area 3 Commercial District Streetscape Improvements at Glass Street and Dodson Avenue in the amount of $209,011.45 with a contingency amount of $15,988.55 for a total amount of $225,000.
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just excited about that improvement, wondering if we could expand on that in a little detail, why? Or not?
Certainly, Mr. Councilman, I was just opening that. I'm surprised, I wasn't asked a question like that about the previous item. But I, I'm delighted to talk about this project. This is a, a project to improve streetscape, the streetscape. And it was a recommended project of the Area 3 planning process that came to be known as the Historic River to Ridge Plan. It was budgeted in the, I believe, the fiscal year 20 budget. And we, we, we've been working on it all year to get it to this point, and it's in budget and we're ready to start construction.
Very good, very good. They deserve it, that's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is Streetscape Improvements to Glass Street and Dodson for two blocks north of the intersection with, excuse me, Dodson and Glass Street. So it's a triangular shape project.
Include trees, sidewalks, the whole?
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
In some, in some cases, we're just adding trees. In some cases, we're adding a full sidewalk and trees.
Very good, thank you, I appreciate the update.
Thank you, Councilperson Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm excited to finally see this project moving forward. It's been great, you know, working with community members with the planning and the design and kind of had some back and forth. But this project is strictly on the District 9 side. Just wanted to make sure that that was noted.
Thank you.
She's not going to share with you.
Councilperson Gilbert?
Well, since Blake brought it up, Blake, tell me more about E.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. I just, I wanted to say how, how excited we are about this project. And I know that council representatives are, these are, this is a significant investment in paving. These are federally funded paving projects that have been in the works for several years. Because they are federally funded, they also include significant upgrades to accessible sidewalks. And the, the, the limits were read, they're in the, they're in the caption there. So it's a, it's, it's a long time coming, much needed projects in three districts that we're really excited about.
Thank you, Blake.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Gilbert. Any more questions on F? If not, please read G.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one for Jameson Construction LLC relative to contract number T19008201 Bailey Avenue Bridge Repairs for an increased amount of $10,000 for a revised contract amount not to exceed
All right, if we have no questions here, we'll move on to next week. August 25th, please read seven B, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into a pedestrian undergrade crossing agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated for the South Chickamauga Creek Extension relative to contract number T14036 for an amount not to exceed $350.
Councilman Gilbert?
Thank you, Chair. This, I'm really asking for B and C. Blake, what exactly are we going to be doing?
This is for the Cromwell section of the South Chick Creek Greenway. It is currently under construction. We are just about to begin construction on two other sections. In fact, I was touring one of them today before this meeting on either side of it. But this is, this is a required agreement for, because the, the greenway goes underneath the railroad tracks. This is typical, and we've done, we've done agreements like this in the past. And they are, they are in concert with each other. These are both agreements related to the same crossing. The, the, the first one obviously is not expensive. The second one is, and I will say this, second one, we're also familiar with this type of agreement. It's essentially an upfront payment that gets drawn down from, based on the, the requirements of the railroad for safety reasons during construction. We may not, this is a not to, this is a not to exceed amount, may not end up using all of that.
Okay, and that's District 5, correct?
That greenway, I'm sorry, it doesn't say, Councilman. I, the green, I know the greenway is, is in District 5. I do not know if it's perhaps in also other districts, but I know, I think the majority of it is in District 5.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Can you get that on your agenda next week, Mr. Bailey?
I certainly can. I'll do my best before 6:00 to have that added.
Well, it's next week, so if you, as long as you get it before we vote on it. To me, it's very important if it's 5 or some other district.
I, I agree. I don't know why, I don't know why we didn't include the district there. And I'll, I'll, I'll make sure we get it on there by next week.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, could you please read C?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into a construction agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated for the South Chickamauga Creek Extension relative to contract number T14036 for an amount not to exceed $138,053.
All right, I see no questions. Mr. Bailey, am I correct? I don't believe you had anything on the future consideration document today, did you? I don't have it in front of me, but I, I believe you didn't have anything there, did you?
We're tracking a few things in September, Mr. Chairman, but we don't have anything for the dates in the, I think, the three-week outlook. No, sir.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. So does anybody have any more questions or, or other questions for Mr. Bailey? If not, thank you very much for your time and efforts.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the council.
All right, so we'll, we'll move over to Public Works now, where we'll address a couple of resolutions and one ordinance, and then we'll have a presentation. And I believe Mr. Holland is going to be stepping up now. Mr. Chair? I just got, Mr. Chair? Yes.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Jim Henderson. I, I.
I'm trying to unmute, thank you.
How are you doing? I'm just, just give me one. Councilman Henderson, I've just, I just got a message across my screen that said my internet is unstable. So just in case, be ready if something happens to me.
I've been there, sir.
All right, hello, Mr. Holland.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's, let's, let's get these agenda items out of the way so you can get on to your riveting presentation.
Yes, sir.
And let's start with Tuesday, August. Okay, let's move on. Let's read ordinances, I believe that's six, is that C?
An ordinance amending Chattanooga City Code Part 2, Chapter 31 Sewers, Manes and Drains, Article 8, Stormwater Management, Division 2, New Development and Redevelopment Requirements, Section 31314, Private Property Responsibilities, Subsection DV, so as to change the SCM Inspector Certification Date due to the coronavirus pandemic.
Councilman Gilbert?
Well, just can you explain a little bit about the private property situation? What we're talking about?
Can you elaborate on your question, sir?
Well, I was trying to get a stand on what we, what we voted on for us. It says about private property and about sewage, about water quality. What are they saying? I read the information, the background information, but it don't say anything.
Yes, sir, this is a, this is a resolution that, or an ordinance amendment that aligns dates. Due to the coronavirus, we weren't able to provide our certification for what used to be called best management practices certifications. So, and it, we certify residential inspectors to receive a best management practices certification in order to inspect certain features that are in our stormwater requirements at a construction site. Or this could be a culvert, a detention pond, retention pond, anything in a private development. And I'd be happy to allow, I don't know if that helps you. But we weren't able to, we weren't, we haven't been able to certi, to have this certification course available to people. And we are aligning the dates and actually pushing it out. It is a requirement for us to provide this certification. And we just haven't been able to due to the coronavirus. And we've aligned those dates with some other dates that are in our ordinance.
Well, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Just extending it until July the 21st of, or the 1st of next year, the time they have to get that certification, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, that's all it's doing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. We'll move on to Resilience 7C, please.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number three for J&amp;J Contractors Incorporated of Chattanooga, Tennessee relative to contract number Y15008201, the new Avondale YFD Center for an increased amount of $128,939.25 to authorize a contingency in the amount of $10,000 for a revised contract amount of $5,969,188.25 for an amount not to exceed $5,979,188.25.
I see Councilman Gilbert first.
I'm just curious, how much money have we spent total on Avondale Center so far?
If, I don't have that at my fingertips, Councilman Gilbert, but I'd be happy to, to connect with Justin Steinman and our project manager to get that information to you. We could probably get it to you tonight, if not as early as tomorrow.
I appreciate it.
Would that be okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. This is, this is part of some. Sorry.
You calling me, Chair?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I was just going to see if Lydia can definitely read both of them and see if, so Justin can explain both of them, basically, and what this looks like and what new money and what old money and how this have already been spent and taken care of and how we're allocating the money for it now. And if, just for him to explain both of them, that's all I was going to get him to do.
Well, I'd be, I'd be glad to do that. That's your district, District 8. Please read D.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to award contract number Y15008204 to Davis Key Outdoor of Chattanooga, Tennessee, Avondale Youth and Family Development Center Landscaping Project in the amount of $108,908, sorry, $895 plus a contingency amount of $10,000 for an amount not to exceed $118,895.
All right, so, so Councilman Byrd would like Mr. Holland to explain both of these?
Yes, sir, please.
So these are, it is important to note that these items are, were either accounted for in new FY21 capital funds that were budgeted for Avondale or accommodated by reductions in other areas. For instance, our resident project representative services were provided by our, our own staff. So that was some savings. These, the change order is part of a broader change order. And I've, I've detailed this description for a few of the council members, including Councilman Byrd and some that had questions about it during the three-week look ahead. Related to kitchen modifications, there were approximately $21,000 in change request forms during the project. So these are decisions that are made during the project. If you recall, we also, did I hear a question? I'm sorry.
I didn't.
Okay, we also had, we had to remove and replace some signage in four rooms. We, there were several, several changes that were made just, you know, in, in, for general construction concerns. One was a significant change was the bleacher seating. We did receive a credit for that, and we were able to make some changes in this change request form that. or in one of the change request forms as part of this change order to add a sidewalk that met ADA requirements. We also have calculated here about ten thousand dollars to make changes to the front entrance where we recently experienced a vehicle accident that hit, where a vehicle hit the building. There are a number of items here in the backup documentation that detail what that change order looks like, and I'll be happy to go into any length or any depth, if you would like. One other notable problem was a waterproof membrane that was required. It was a change that we had to make in construction. We could not, the humidity in the building would not allow for the concrete to cure. We had some moisture issues that, as we were putting down the gym floor. So I think most of these items had been discussed at council previously. Several of the items I think you're very familiar with, including the bleacher modification. Yes, and in terms of the second item is part of the site work, which we anticipated all along bidding out separately. We are excited to get that contract underway, and Davis Key has been selected.
You good, Councilman Bird?
I'm super excited, Chair. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Coonrod, you're muted.
You're right. A lot of the stuff that we had done encountered once it got on to the agenda for the council to approve, so once council changed. However, a lot of the details was in the paperwork prior to us coming on council in twenty seventeen, and we went back and changed some stuff that the community had already knew about the bleachers and all this other stuff that we've changed that the community was already on board prior to Councilman Bird getting into office. And now, all of a sudden, we had to go back and correct all of that stuff. We have eighteen Y F D sites. Majority of them are looking condemned, and I know this, this is not in your wheelhouse for the Y F D centers, but however, we, we need to start spending money and paying attention to those other Y F D sites as well. Like, how much more money are we gonna spend into their site? And I wanna say, I hope Dr. Mack is listening to this call on here today, so when he's sending that email, I'll be prepared, because the county don't give us a dollar when it comes to the infrastructures of the city, nor do the county commission that represent our people, that we share, do anything for those constituents as well. But they have a lot to say on decisions that the city council makes. But we have too many sites that, I mean, going unkept and unlooked. We've got several people that serve on this Avondale Committee that don't even live in the neighborhood, have never lived in the neighborhood, yet they're helping to assist in decision-making when it comes to our Y F D site. So, I mean, how much after this is this, I know you got a mural and other kind of things that's been going on, but is there any other spending outside of this, what is complete everything necessary for this Y F D site?
No. Well. Say what, Chair?
I said, I think she asked Justin the question.
Okay.
Well, well, Councilwoman Coonrod, thank you for the question. We don't anticipate anything additional. I will, that, not, I'm sorry, Councilman Bird, that is in construction or current design. Let me, let me rephrase that. So, the Public Works Department is responsible for the construction of capital projects, and so I can't really speak to future planning for Coach, for that center or other centers. I can speak to the work that my group does in capital projects for that assist in maintaining the infrastructure and well-kept buildings. And we have, we have done a significant amount of work in the last two to three years in most every Y F D center that needed help in terms of roofs or critical infrastructure changes. The programmatic or additional features of Y F D centers is more so in Coach Jennings' wheelhouse, and I don't wanna speak for him, but we do have a good partnership where his group is brainstorming on things that Y F Ds need, and our group is working hard to meet the demands of the construction and maintenance demands for all Y F D centers.
Well, can Justin Steinman answer the question he's on here? Because, I mean, I'm curious. We got other Y F D centers that have a need. And, you know, I just wanna know what's the plan on, what we plan on doing for those other sites.
Councilwoman, I would be happy to yield to Justin Steinman if the chairman would do that.
No, no, we're not, we're not doing that, but we will ask for Justin Steinman or whoever the administration wants to bring up here in a separate meeting, because we've got probably what's gonna be an hour-long presentation about to happen. But we'll, we can plan on getting that information. I agree with you, Councilperson Coonrod, that the last time we did some of this, some of the work was a long time ago when I was around. So, and we have done probably a better job of keeping up roots and things like that, but I'd be interested to hear a plan that's going forward also, so could, we'll, if it's okay with you, we'll have that potentially, even if I can get ready that quickly in the next public works and transportation.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Is that okay, Councilperson Coonrod?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, that's. Justin, well, I'll tell you what, I'll contact Mr. Steinman and ask, or maybe I should, maybe do Mr. Hayes or someone like that, start there versus going directly to Mr. Steinman. Councilman Bird, have you got something else?
Just to end it, yeah, thank you guys for all the work with Avondale. We really love it, and this is one of the most amazing areas, and the center's looking great, and the kids loved it when we was able to go there, and it was getting frequently tremendously. I think we're probably one of the most frequent centers there is, and I just love the fact that we're there, but I do want some more money spent on the ballers out front, because we don't want any more cars running into the building, and I hate that it's so up close, and I just wanna make sure that we protect our kids and protect our constituents around this building and, you know, close to it, so hopefully we can spend some more money there and just keep this great thing going. And I look forward to even helping you guys with your centers in your districts and the other centers I have in my district, making them amazing. So, thank you so much.
Oh, there's actually another one in District Eight.
He's Chattanooga and Concord City. You gotta get them all good. Love y'all.
Okay, you know, maybe if our cousins up at the commission restore their fund, maybe Commissioner Mackey will help you with that. All right, moving along. Okay, Justin, well, actually, if you'll take a look at the look here, there are a couple of Public Works items on that. Does anybody have any questions about any of those before we go into the presentation?
And as you're looking, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, bring Bill Payne up. That might help speed up.
The presentation starting?
Our presentation's starting.
Bring Bill.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I see no hand. So, we'll get to the future considerations when they make the two-week agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Justin. We got Bill up, but he's muted.
Well, let me, let me just introduce why we're here today, if you would allow me to do that, Mr. Chairman. So, at our last committee meeting, the several council members had questions about water quality and what water quality programs do for those city residents and city as a whole. We also had questions about what projects our staff work on that are related to flooding, drainage, and how those things impact the lifestyles of people who live in the city of Chattanooga and how we protect property. And so, Bill and, Bill Payne, our city engineer, and his staff, along with one of our consultants, Mr. Bolinger, Justin Bolinger with H D R, all have developed a presentation. We have kept it as brief as possible. It is quite technical, but we want to get through this with as much level of detail as you see appropriate. If there are questions following the presentation, feel free to ask, and we can add any level of detail in a, either a side conversation, or if you had any questions that you would like for us, or responses you'd like for us to bring back to the council body, we'd be happy to do that. But I'd like to flip it to Bill Payne, and who will be emceeing and presenting part of this, along with a few of his staff and one of our consultants.
Sure. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and just to let Ms. Lydia know, the other staff and the consultant, I can go ahead and provide those names. We are gonna do the presentation in two portions, so the first one is one that I'm going to conduct just briefly to talk about the items that are covered by the water quality fee, which answers some of the questions from last week, and then after the question and answer, if any, on that particular section, then Justin Bolander from H D R will, also has a separate presentation about the project that they did for the rate study evaluation of the tiers. So at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And. Apologies. This is the first time I've tried to share my screen in Zoom this way, so I did not anticipate it was gonna ask me all these questions. I have not had this problem before. My apologies. All right. If, I can just confirm, let's see, that everybody is seeing the screen. I'll go ahead and get started.
I can see it.
I can see it.
All right, that means I've managed to click all the right buttons, so thanks for bearing with me with the technical side of this. So, this is very similar to an annual report presentation that would be put together by our staff. Typically, it's done later in the year. Our permit year ends on June the thirtieth, and so that is a permit that's issued by the state of Tennessee for our N P D S system. We've basically put together a condensed version with some of the facts and figures in it for the purposes of what the council asked for, so the timing was very close. And at a later date, our full and complete annual report presentation will be presented to the Stormwater Regulations Board, and then we'll subsequently schedule time as necessary with the council as well. So, some of the major requirements under both the Clean Water Act and our, and ultimately into our permit are listed on the screen. They are primarily about water quality, and you can see several of those listed on the screen. In addition to that, our program also does work with the drainage system, and we utilize the water quality fee for that as well, for both drainage and flood control purposes, and I'll talk about both during the presentation. To begin with, we'll go through several of the water quality-related services. The first is a monitoring and I D D E, which is in the second bullet, which is illicit discharge and detection elimination. For those two, just to give an idea of the things that have been done in the last year, water quality staff collected more than two thousand grab samples, which are water samples, as well as non-macro invertebrate or aquatic life samples that were taken. These are for a variety of different program elements, and you can see that are listed in that bullet below, and I won't go through each one of those, but they're there in case you have questions or wanna know the types of samples and the types of things that are analyzed by taking those samples. Regarding illicit discharge and detection, this past year, we saw a fourteen percent increase in investigations of illicit discharges. We've listed the numbers there of eighty-three violations and two hundred and fifty-six inspections, as well as three hundred and five communications with property owners. Twenty-three of these actually were emergency responses that consisted of going out with the first responders on some sort of spill that occurred, whether it was vehicular, due to an accident, some sort of, or some sort of industrial discharge. We also distributed lots of information, and there's also smoke testing that's performed, because sanitary sewer discharges are part of, are considered an illicit discharge as well, because we certainly want the sanitary sewers to stay within the sanitary system. There are also municipal and industrial inspections that are required. There are, there were eighteen, what are, they're called multi-sector permits by the state of Tennessee. Eighteen of those sites were inspected by water quality staff. Five of those fall into a federal designation of high-risk industrial site. There were two commercial sites that were inspected under this program, and then thirteen municipal sites were inspected. Those are done, are required to be repeated on a quarterly basis. Stormwater control measures, Justin mentioned earlier in the discussion about the ordinance change, best management practices, or B and Ps, is something that you've, you've no doubt heard many times over all the years. Those, that term is still in use, but is primarily used during the construction phase, and EPA and the state have begun using a new term called stormwater control measures, or S C Ms, for the post-construction controls. So those are things, whether they're detention ponds, oil skimmers, infiltration beds, those types of things that are put in place and continue to function and treat the water there. The city is, performs the inspection and maintenance of our city-owned systems, and we also perform inspections of those on private property as well, and we maintain an inventory and track those. And we also require the maintenance of those by the private property owner. So during fiscal year twenty, there were more than five hundred and eighty-one S C Ms inspected. Those are located at three hundred and forty-two different facilities that were inspected, so many of them have multiple measures in place. As a result of that, the inspection resulted in eighty, more than eighty-five enforcement letters or emails that were conducted. There were also fifty of these inspections that were conducted on city property for S C Ms that are located on city facilities. Rain Smart is an incentive program that is geared towards education, financial, and technical assistance, and is really intended to help build out that capacity to try to gain voluntary compliance for folks who wanna do things that are, that are, that understand what the system is and how it can help. It's really geared towards private residential properties as opposed to commercial properties, and so that's the reason why it is voluntary, because those requirements are different in the residential setting. We've listed the different permit goals that are met by the Rain Smart program there as well. So far, Rain Smart has had So far, Rain Smart has had 69 applicants that have come to the city so far. There have been 52 people attend four different workshops. There were nine projects where there was just installation only, variety of rain gardens and rain barrels that were on there. This is a reimbursement program back to the residential property owner and there's been $12,146 and some change reimbursed back to homeowners under this program. It's an average of 39% of reimbursement. If there's a rain garden installed and it's been about 50% average reimbursement for rain barrels that are installed. So just to give you an idea of what the impact is, and so it's an open program and people can contact our water quality program if they're interested in it. Green Grants is a similar type of reimbursement program, but it's on the non-residential scale. It's a competitive application and review process that's utilized for that. It started a few years ago and priority is given to projects that are going to do retrofitting typically for runoff reduction. And there's $100,000 that's available for those grants. The smallest grant amount would be $1,000 or depending on the applications we have, they have gone as high as the full amount to a single applicant because of limited number that are there. In addition to earning the grant, the property owner is still able to earn water quality fee discounts and they're also able to earn credit coupons, which carries some value being traded or exchanged among private property owners. Certainly raises a lot of awareness. We want it to spur reinvestment or spur investment in retrofitting and provides a lot of ability to demonstrate what the, what the program is able to do and what the benefits are for sustainable development. The watershed stewards team is comprised of in-house staff. They have performed 2,500 hours of green infrastructure maintenance. There have conducted 16 different rain guardian, rain garden guardians, that's a mouthful, volunteer events and which have added an additional 120 hours of green infrastructure maintenance. That's where volunteers come in and actually help. All of this is on public properties that are owned by the city. So this is city staff that are performing this maintenance as well as volunteers that are interested in making contributions in things that are within their community. Staff have attended training events as well, adding to their professional development as well as conducting presentations that have reached more than 2,000 members of the public under the program. Certainly this year, we've had to deal with the tornado response. So there were water quality crews and inspections that went out and were performed on about 13 miles of streams in the South Chickamauga Creek watershed. That data was recorded in the field using GIS survey applications so that we could share that easily with other departments. And there were 50 different instances of stream blockage that were recorded. Land disturbing permits and the applications and the inspections of those permits, that has continued at a very robust pace. It's just even during a lot of the COVID environments, the numbers that you see here are listed, significant number of applications, many of these are comparable to the fiscal year 19 figures. So there has not been a lot of change, certainly not any decrease from fiscal year 20, for fiscal year 20. So all of this ties in with the storm system inventory. So what is the storm drainage system that we're protecting and/or maintaining? There are 744 miles of private conveyance. 72% of that is open channels or swales or natural channels on private property. The other 28% is closed pipes or culverts and drains that are on those properties. The balance of the system is over 1,300 miles of public conveyance, slightly more open channels in the public conveyance than closed channels. And those figures are there on the screen for you. Certainly happy to, happy to provide more breakdown or detail on those for anyone who's So when we talk about storm system protocols, there are certain things that of course the city can do and there are other things the city does not do. So just to give a way of reference, a lot of what is done is cleaning out catch basins, manholes and pipes, maintaining and replacing the drainage system in the right of way or in easements that are in the city's name. And we'll also, we'll remove woody vegetation that's an inch or larger in diameter. We won't get in there with machinery and like grub everything out, but if it's something that can be cut and drug out there, because it won't lay down during a high water event, that is something that can be removed. Other things though, as far as maintaining or replacing open channels on private property or just regular cutting of vegetation that does, that does lay down during a high water flow or other work that is the property owner's responsibility is not performed by the city. Citywide Services Division, where the crews operate from, performs regular inspection and maintenance. And during fiscal year 20, they went out and inspected all of the drainage system in the, in the public right of way was inspected during the fiscal year. Every catch basin and inlet that they encountered during that, during that time is cleaned while they're there. They also determined there were 291 locations that needed additional attention from engineering staff, 57 locations where they dispatched a back truck to come and more than 60 locations that needed some additional vegetative mang that's needing a larger crew. In terms of citizen requests, there were more than 2,100 total service requests that were submitted through 311 for the fiscal year and 840 of those resulted in work orders. Show a little breakdown of part of that, of that 840, 562 of those were actually ones that were written as a result of the investigations by the staff. And then in terms of work completed, the Citywide Services Division completed 789 work orders during the fiscal year. Some of those, of course, are work orders that had been written in a prior fiscal year and had carried over, which is, which is generally the case in these type situations. And then lastly, certainly not least, training, public education and outreach is very critical. While the majority of these events, these 55 events occurred pre-COVID, they certainly all were significant and a large part of what's necessary in order to maintain the program and meet our, meet our permit compliance requirements. And so of course, we'll certainly have to continue to do things and find new ways to reach folks until things are able to return back to normal. But we will continue to do that and our staff is working hard on that every day. And with that, we'll certainly be glad to answer any questions.
We have a question from Councilman Gilbert. Councilman Gilbert, you're muted. You're muted.
Sound better?
That's better.
Thank you.
Yeah.
On the presentation, he mentioned about things that they do not do for private property and I have to go over that because there's a lot of flooding in areas where areas are being developed in commercial, are you in a house or residential, that land has been disturbed and a lot of more water go different places. When you have ditches that's overgrowth and then you have debris that collects to the overgrowth, then it causes a dam or a barrier where water cannot go as swiftly through it that will cause flooding in people's homes. I remember when we started water quality, I asked that question, will we be able to clean out these ditches without charging all our constituents this amount of money? Because there's an issue about flooding. I was told yes, but then after we started water quality, then that kind of yes went out the window somewhere. We gotta have something in place to clean these ditches and we, our constituents pay X amount of dollars to hopefully be a part of that. And a lot of people calling me back and forth about their house getting flooded. We have a lot of these rains, heavy rains coming down, which they don't happen all the time, but when it happened, they flood people out. But if the dishes was more so cleaned out, the water flow of water will be able to flow faster and that way it won't just start building up and flooding people out. So where can we start? Why can't we start doing, I know years ago, we used to clean ditches and then we stopped.
Councilman, I think, I think much of that probably is about balancing those expectations. There is, there is a degree of that, that can happen and should be happening, but there's also a limit to how far in that we can go simply because there is a limit to the manpower and the resources that are available from the water quality fee. So many years ago, not during this most recent, well, both during this, this most recent rate study as well as the prior study about 10 years before, actually both had had a variety of options in terms of to what extent things would go and there, there's always a limit in terms of what the, what the customer is willing to pay and the service that they're, that they want to get for that. And so there has been that balance that's there, but certainly if there's, if there are any detailed locations about those, we'll be happy to look into those outside, outside of this. But, and we have listed on the, on the website and I know two weeks ago, there was a request as well by Councilman Ledford for a, for a brief one-page summary and we have, it's, it's one sheet of paper. There's a lot that goes on with the water quality fee, so I'll say it's one sheet of paper because it's two-sided, but there is, there is a link to that drainage policy and that, that policy is in effect and has been in effect and we can continue to abide by that to that extent. I think changing that would certainly put us in a situation where it would be a higher level of service and as a result, there would have to be some sort of either reduction in other services somewhere or there'd have to be an increase in the fee in order to go with that. But I think within those confines of that policy, we certainly are able to operate.
Do we have a crew for water quality to clean out ditches? Come out of their budget?
There are multiple, there are multiple crews that operate out of Citywide Services that are, that are paid for from water quality. Yes. Those, those, there are both pipe crews and ditch crews. I don't know the specific numbers, but of each crew, but there are, there are crews for each, yes.
The water quality contract, our own people to clean out ditches, correct?
Well, I don't know about contracting with them. They're basically, their salaries and the equipment is paid for by the Water Quality Fund. There's not any contract involved. It's a matter of funding within the budget.
Okay. And then you saying that if we start putting out a lot of ditches at one time, it costs more money, but what, what was the cost several years ago when we was cleaning out ditches? What was the man, can you give me the information, the manpower that we had back then versus what we have now? I mean, you can't do it now, get that information from me?
I would just, I would just have to look at it. I would certainly need to know, if you'd like to send, send me the timeframe that you're specifically thinking about. I've, I've been involved with the program for 20 years now, so it's, it would be a little bit like throwing darts, trying to figure out what manpower was like in, at some point in the past compared to today. So I wouldn't want to do that without understanding more specifically about what you want. We've gone through, through two levels of service and cost of service rate studies in that timeframe. And so certainly manpower and, and both labor and resources and equipment have all changed in that time.
Well, let's look at 1999, when we were doing it then, and see what it cost then, how many people we had in 1999.
I don't know to what extent we have that information, but we can certainly take a look at it and see what's available. We'll be glad to get with you offline and try to understand that a little bit better. But I don't know what, what information is still available from 1999.
Okay. Well, if you can't get 1999, just go ahead and give me what you can get as far as the years that we was doing it, but you have paperwork on.
And again, as I say, Councilman, there's, there's not been any, any, any change in that policy for the last 10 years for sure. And I, and there's not been any, there was not any significant change in it even then. So again, if there are specific instances or locations where there's an issue, I'll be glad to look into that more specifically offline as well.
Okay, I get with.
You okay, Councilman Gilbert?
No, but I get with him later on.
All right. All right. So your hand is still up.
Oh, sorry.
Reluctant to go away from you.
Well, you know.
All right. That's no problem. All right, Bill, I don't see anybody else's hands right now, but have you folks ever been here over seven years and I know this subject has come up several times and Justin's still on here even though he's muted, but have you folks ever looked at different service level? It's a greater service level, obviously it's going to cost more money. Have you ever looked at the ramifications of that and come up with some idea in case the council one day said, we want you to go back to providing that service? Not saying the council would do that, I'm just saying, has that ever been looked at?
In both times when there has been a level of service, cost of service, there have been multiple options that have been, that have been available. In both cases, the, there is one, at least one or more than one that are higher than our current level of service that are on the table and none of those have been selected from either of those two rate studies. But they have been, they have been available both, both times that a rate study's been conducted by the program.
So you, you already have some information, albeit it may be a little bit, little bit of age on it, but you already have some information that you could share with the county on what type of dollars we're talking about to raise that service level?
Yes, we can, we certainly could, could put it in the perspective of the timeframe in which the rate study was and be able to show, show the comparisons at that time of what was being charged and, and what, what options were being looked at. We can, we certainly have, have those reports available.
Okay, great. I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask for that, but I'm going to ask that the council consider that and give me some direction, not right now, but at some point in the not too distant future. Okay, so I see no more questions for Bill. Bill, this includes your part of the presentation?
Yes, and I'm going to continue to stay on in case there are questions at the end of, at the conclusion of Mr. Bolander's presentation, but at this time, Justin Bolander from HDR Engineering is, is here and by way of some background on this, this is, this has to do with the evaluation of tiered rates, which are used by, by some other programs in that and sort of what is the, what is the equitable, what is an equitable and fair rate structure and how does our rate structure compare to those? And so there had been at the time, a series of, of a couple of different scopes that were looked at with the council at the time and the one that Mr. Bolander is here to report on now is actually one from, that was selected by the, by the council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Justin Bolander with HDR.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Glad to be here presenting with you today and talking about the results of this tiered rate structure evaluation. We've had the results finished for quite some time and I'm glad to finally get, get to present. Everyone can hear me? We got volume and we're good there? Not hearing any no's. So throughout the presentation, I've got about 15 slides. I'm trying not to talk too fast. I'm really gonna talk about the process that we went through, a little bit about the history of how we got there. And then we'll talk about, uh, one of the topics that we looked into was the fairness equity, the socio-economic objectives of considering this, this change. We'll talk about the results and, and cost to implement and then we'll, we'll go through some, some question and answers. So at the implementation of the last level and cost of service rate study, the council asked us to, to look at, uh, what it would take to change the current program over to tiered rate structure. So that was when fiscal year 2019 budget was put into effect. And we started considering this process, uh, from then and now we're ready to, to walk through the results here. So the, the current rate structure is based on a flat rate approach. It's been implemented since 2003 and the equivalent residential unit or the, the square footage of impervious area on a, on a typical residential lot was computed to be 3,200 square feet. And that's based on a statistical, sorry, statistical random sample of residential properties throughout the city. So right now, single-family residential parcels just pay that, that one flat rate fee, $126 or around there. And then for non-single-family residential parcels, commercial multifamily units, they pay based on the amount of the impervious area they have based on that, that ERU. So the flat rate approach is really the most widely used, um, and, and trusted, that's really in the industry. The, uh, the tiered rate structure evaluation was really a, a decision-making tool for city council to consider changing over to a tiered rate structure. And, you know, a tiered rate structure has, has different levels of, um, impervious areas. So a, a smaller home and property with less impervious area would be in the lower tier and then it would, it would just rank up from there. We evaluated six existing tiered programs. And the goal was really to identify the process and implementation costs to convert to a tiered rate structure. We, we looked at these six programs and we really tried to find, um, you know, programs in Tennessee and also regionally in the southeast that are comparisons to, uh, to Chattanooga. What we were able to do was, was reach out to all six of these communities and really discuss with them and walk through a questionnaire that we created to gather the information that we needed to, to provide a ranking and a scoring of, of the criteria that we came up with. Each of these six communities has a tiered program right now. The, the table here is showing the square footage of each of those tiers that these programs have. Some have two tiers, some have three. And really the, the split or the, you know, how they come up with these tiers is really based on how the size and the amount of properties they have. You have to consider how all of these properties would fit into these tiers and how they fit with, with each of the programs' fees and, and how that comes out to, to fit the needs of, of each of the programs. As you can see down here on the bottom, I've got, I've got Chattanooga's program, just, that's the flat rate. So after we were able to, to gather this information, one of the criteria that we looked at was, was equity and fairness, really to understand how each program kind of fits into that criteria. And so we gave each one a ranking between, between one and five. So the highest ranking being five, we assign that to the total impervious area method. Now, none of these six programs or Chattanooga uses this method. There's, there's very few of these programs in existence. But what it does is it measures all of the properties and then bills each property in accordance with the impervious area on each property. So each property more or less has a different amount on their bill, uh, based on down to 100 square feet. So, um, that, that program takes the, the most data intensive, the most labor-intensive to, to understand individually how each property gets assigned that impervious area and then they're billed just, uh, based on that amount. A step down from that would be a tiered program where all of the properties are measured, where you have good data to be able to get into the GIS programs, understand the aerial photography and, and the information that you can gather on each of those properties and actually measure it and assign each to a tier. The, the middle ranking here would be where Chattanooga is at right now with the flat rate ERU. Other tiered programs, if they use a lot of estimates and they don't have good data, then that fairness based on, on that program is really decreased. We'll talk about that a little bit more here in a moment. So when we talk about equity and fairness and socio-economic objectives with a water quality fee, we have to think about the fee not being a tax. It, it truly is a payment for a service, similar to a water utility bill or an electric bill. You're paying for that, that service, uh, to your property. And the, the relationship of the level and cost of service has to have a substantial and reasonable relationship between the cost that the municipality incurs to provide that service and the rate that each property owner pays for that service. And going back to the estimating and measuring of the impervious areas, uh, communities will use estimates when they don't have good data. And that data doesn't exist and they don't really know how much impervious area is on each property. And, and, you know, that, that really is, is something that takes time and takes effort and, and takes expenditure of, of cost to, to accurately know what that information is and apply it. So that's why when you talk about fairness and equity, that estimating versus measuring, it really is the, the, the cost and the effort that would go into that tiered program that would make it more fair. When we talk about tiered programs and looking at ways to, um, combat and, and increase our, our socio-economic goals and objectives is with, with a tiered program, with a water quality program, it's, it's difficult to track that. And reason being is that the, the folks that pay these, um, you know, these fees, we, we don't have the data on, on income and socio-economic status. So it's difficult to determine who, who benefits from, um, from these types of, of goals. Property value is another one. There really is no direct relationship to income based on property value. You know, it could be a, a property, an elderly property owner that already has the, the, the property paid off, but yet they, they have a, a low income. So it's, it's just not always a direct relationship. And the same thing with property value and income is not always a direct relationship with impervious area and runoff. You can have a more expensive property that's smaller than a large property that, that has more impervious area. So when considering these objectives, um, we just wanted to point out the DISCOP programs. There's, there's the existing, um, program here for the tax relief that helps with water quality fees. And there could be others that can be applied to, to meet these objectives as well. So here's a summary of the criteria rankings for the six programs. We were able to, to discuss with all these programs. We didn't get a lot of input back from, from Nashville Metro. So we weren't able to feel real comfortable with that data. But the, the, these are the nine rankings that we have. The first eight are, uh, the ones you see here, and then equity and fairness, the one we've already talked about is across the bottom, which held an important factor of two. So that's why you see a total of, of 50. So this is a scale from, from zero to 50. And we looked at things like, is the program legally defensible? Has it been, uh, has it been tried in court before? Have there been results there? How much impervious areas were estimated? What's the public perception and the basis for implementation? And these things all came into effect to, um, to show us this, this total score. So here is just a graphical table, a graph here showing, uh, Griffin, Georgia, with a score of 42 is really the, the preferred tiered program out of, um, out of the results. So we'll talk a little bit more about Griffin and compare that to the Chattanooga program. So here we have, uh, the same nine criteria. And you can see the preferred tiered program we pulled out. There's Griffin, Georgia. And we also scored Chattanooga's flat rate ERU program along these same criteria. And then as we talked about before, the kind of top level of, um, impervious area methods is looking at the total impervious area method. And that scores, uh, somewhat higher than, than Chattanooga, the current program. So, um, another just graph here showing those three programs are very close. And, uh, that's just the, the total scoring. So the cost to implement, so, so we've gone through this evaluation of these, um, six programs. We've looked at what tiered programs are out there? What do they consider important? How do they implement those? How do they develop those programs? We were able to, to provide this. We have, we have this presentation results. We, we have a paper that goes into great detail to summarize the results. So looking at next steps, if, if the decision was made to move forward to, to look further into converting to a tiered study, it would take approximately $230,000, the way we've estimated it, to use the, the data that the city has right now on impervious area and, and evaluate each of those parcels, do a quality control review of that data and determine based on those, um, based on those properties and their sizes, their impervious areas, to come up with what that tier would look like. And that would, that would be the, the first level. And that would, that would allow us to understand all the full data that we have currently. There may be some data gaps. There might be other information that has to be collected. And then on top of that, there would have to be another round of level and cost of service study to figure out how those tiers would then combine with the current level and cost of service to, to see how that rate would, would fall out into those, into each of those tiers. So, um, the, the, the total cost to implement the program is, is really unknown at this time, but it would be somewhere in the, you know, the additional on top of the 230 would be somewhere close to what the level and cur, level and cost of service rate studies have cost in the past along, along those, those lines of effort. So, um, those are all the slides I have today. So I will turn it back to everyone for, uh, question and answer.
You're, you're muted, Councilman Mitchell. I'm, I'm assuming you're, are you calling on me?
Yeah, I just testing you.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Henderson.
So, so to get the ball rolling, if we wanted to go to a tiered system, uh, we're talking about, uh, uh, $230,000 just to do the data collection, gather all the information. I mean, the, I, I, the property assessor doesn't have the information on file that we, we need.
Uh, Councilman Henderson, just to, uh, Justin and I talked about this, just to make sure me and I don't step over each other trying to answer questions, but, but that is correct. Uh, the, the tax assessor does not have any information about, uh, about impervious area.
So they don't show driveways and footprint of houses?
Uh, not in the assessor's information. The assessor's information, uh, shows, just indicates the number of buildings on a property. And, and GIS is not updated frequently enough, uh, to be able to utilize that data without it, without providing, um, without gathering additional data for that.
So I noticed, uh, when you compared Griffin, Georgia to the way we do it, uh, as far as being equitable and, and all of that, they came out very close. And I guess what I can't understand is how it's equitable for a thousand-square-foot house and a 4,000-square-foot house to pay the same stormwater fee? Because I'm assuming a thousand-square-foot house is not running as much water off of their property as a 4,000-square-foot house.
Well, I, I, and, and, and just, just to be clear, and I'll, I'll, I'll let Mr. Bolander, um, chime in on, on this part. But then there's, there's not a, the, what was listed on that chart, uh, the, the equity and fairness criteria, Griffin actually was, was listed higher, um, on that single criteria. Um, there were, there were other elements of the overall Griffin program that led it to, 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 to score slightly below where Chattanooga is. Um, so there are, because there are multiple factors that have to be considered in, in any methodology that you used. Um, i- if, if, if that makes sense, I, it sounded like there were kind of two questions to your, to your, or two parts to your question. I, I'd like to answer that one first and, and see if Mr. Bolander has anything you'd like to add regarding the, the, the differences between Griffin and Chattanooga.
Sure. Let me, uh, share my screen one more time. Find all this information. We've got it right here. We can see it. So, um, Councilman Henderson, the, um, the equity and fairness here is on line number nine. And you can see there where Griffin, Georgia does rank higher than Chattanooga in regards to equity and fairness. And, and this really goes back to, if, if you look at one of the, the other tiered programs that, that don't use, uh, so much accuracy in their measurements, uh, to, to gather those impervious areas, they did rank, uh, lower than that, uh, we have there for Chattanooga. So it really comes down to, you know, if you have, um, a thousand-square-foot house compared to a, to a 4,000-square-foot house, it, it really comes down to applying that through the program. And you end up with someone who has a thousand-square-foot or, or, you know, 1,900-square-foot house, they end up paying less than someone who has a 2,000-square-foot house. Well, did, did that 19,000-square-foot house and that 2,000-square-foot house get measured the same way? Did, did all that data come together in an accurate manner to provide that split? So you just end up with a lot more effort to come up with the overall program that places everyone accurately in that tier. So, um, on the surface, while you compare the 1,000 to the 4,000, and that's a pretty easy question, but it starts to become a lot more of a gray area when you look at all those different possibilities that kind of layer up in those tiers.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll have more questions, but I see other hands, so, uh, let's, let's get to other questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson Burr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could we take this chart down, please? And look at the one that talked about, well, I don't need the chart.
Let me put it back up.
You talked about ultimate, you talked about cost being to, $230,000. Mr. Bolander, is that right?
Yes.
Due to the evaluation, um, what's the ultimate cost?
Um, you know, Bill, Bill, I'll, I'll start real quick and then I'll, I'll turn it over to you. So it's really difficult to determine right now.
Would it be, say, a million dollars? Would it be, here's where I'm going with this. Um, it couldn't just cost $230,000. It's got to cost a lot more than that to get your ultimate information. And that's cool. I'm not debating that. My question is, have we done a cost-benefit analysis on projections? To show ultimately, once this is all done, what the impact, what the ultimate impact would be? Were we to spend the initial, I'd say, over a million dollars? Were we to spend the initial, I'd say, over a million dollars?
And thank you, Councilwoman, for, for that question.
Okay.
Well, just, just to, just to, just to chime in on that, I, I, I do, I, I do believe it would certainly be north of five hundred thousand dollars and could very easily be closer to, to three quarters of a million or a million dollars once it's all, once it's all completed. Now, as, as far as the scope of, of this contract and a cost benefit analysis, no ma'am, there is, there is not one, been one done. This was a scope that was requested by the council and defined by the council, and it did not include those elements. And the, the, the staff, a, at the time that, that this was requested, at the completion of the last rate study, felt and recommended that, that our current system is, is, is the best for a variety of reasons. And so, and, and this is not something that, that, this is not coming to you with a staff recommendation that we make a change. This is simply reporting back the information that was requested and, and authorized by the council.
Well, and, and I get that, but you've got great minds at work there with your Mr. Bolander and you all. And, and at some point, if you were asked the ultimate question, excuse me, you'd have to look at, no matter what we spend to do the turnaround, were we to choose to do it in the name of equity? What would the impact be? Would it be negligible? And I'm not holding you to this, or would it be really terrific? Have you thought about that?
Well, I, I don't, I, I, I believe that in the end, there would, the, this, and, and this is a difficult question to ask because you're, you, you, you're asking a question that is, that is, is based on speculation on, on, on our part. So there are, there are more, many more communities that use the methodology Chattanooga, Chattanooga uses today than utilize tiered systems. And tiered systems are used as a way to either, either estimate or to try to, you know, to, to try to share some of that load in a, in a different way. And, but they are suspect to, to legal challenges and they're suspect to either higher administrative costs or higher overhead in order to get there. So at, at this point, I, I don't know that I can say that there, that there is a benefit one way or the other. I do believe that it opens the door, it certainly opens the door from a legal perspective because it, those tiered, tiered systems have not been challenged in court as much. And there, there is not a, there's not a methodology that's out there that you can just say, well, if you follow this methodology on the tiered system, then, then your program stands up just fine. And it's because they're all done differently. And there's a different reason for selecting the way those tiers there. And I, and, and that was, that was something that I think Justin Bolander was, was alluding to from their discussions with these communities was many times either, either these communities were making these decisions either to reduce their upfront cost and estimate things because that was a less expensive way, or they were, they were doing it in a way to be able to, to, to shift costs from, from a, around within those residential properties. And they, and they had a reason for selecting the tier that they did. Honestly, it's, I, I don't know that, I don't really know that we come out with, with anything much that's in there. The, the, there is, I, I certainly understand that there is, there is a, a difference if different tiers are charged different rates. However, to be able to, to objectively step back and, and look at any of those rates and, and be able to say, you know, well, this seems like an easy way to make that, make that, that, that distinction from one tier to the other is honestly quite hard to do on the fly and, and with, with what we know at the moment. Because, and, and, and the reason for that just simply has to do with the fact that, that there, there are many different variables that are, that are being applied here. And one of which is, you know, just utilizing the example of the size of the house. Size of the house doesn't necessarily dictate in any way what the runoff is because is that all on one level or is it on multiple levels? And so there, there, there are a lot of different factors that, that really contribute to that and, and which, which are not necessarily tied into that, to that existing data.
That's, that was my concern, that you have a lot of intervening variables that could make a big difference. And so I'm just wondering if this is even, can be, we can consider it a valid comparison. Anyway, thanks, thanks a lot, Bill.
Certainly.
Thank you, Councilperson, Councilman Gilbert.
Just to piggyback on, Councilman Burr, I was going to ask that question about square footage, it's based off the roof and not necessarily the house itself. So that if you had a hundred fifty thousand dollar home versus a two million dollar home and the roof is basically the same, because a two million dollar home is three stories high, you still pay the same amount of money, correct? Because the roof is the same, identical roof. It's just one is an orange style home and the other one is three stories up.
That's correct. If they're the, i, 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 if the footprint is the same, then, then their contribution to runoff will be identical, so.
And also, it's based off concrete surrounding the house too, correct?
That is correct.
So that some of these older homes have a lot, have multiple driveways when it's this multiple driveway, but the newer homes being built, special ones that are a million on up, they are using different materials that would not necessarily concrete, but it's concrete where water can go through, where it won't cost as much money. I know at one time the airport was going to do the same thing for building sidewalks, where the sidewalk would be where water can soak through where, without using concrete, it's called something else. Is that name? Is that correct?
Certainly the material that's, that's used would, would either have to be a factor or it would have to be discounted and just, and just stated that it didn't matter. But, but that, that impervious area around the property would have to be taken into account in order to determine what the, what the, what the total impervious area is in order to be able to, to put that into play. And, and, and some, you know, the, the layout of the property would certainly to, have to be taken into account as those measurements were taken.
And you have to do it three to four years because if someone's, you come out the first time, there's no concrete at all. And then you come back in four years, they got concrete everywhere. So you have to redo this quarterly, I mean, every, what, two or three years? To evaluate how much they're probably paying for water quality?
Currently, currently, we are, we are doing that evaluation on, on, on the, on the non-single family properties which are building multiple, multiples of an ERU. That is done annually. And in order to do it on, on any frequency that's less than annually would further increase the risk of, of being defeated in a legal challenge based on, based on what we know about that. Because that's, that is a, that is a factor that needs to be taken into account, which is, you know, it's a contribution to runoff is changing. Then, then, and, and that's not being accounted for in some way, then, then how is everyone paying their fair share? So you would have to invest both labor and you know, data collection efforts in order to, in order to bring all that along.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're, we're approaching an hour in this presentation. I see another hand in Councilman. Councilman Leftford, go ahead.
Thanks, now we need about forty minutes on this question, so we should be in good shape, Chairman. We kind of touched on this a little bit before, Bill or Justin, but when we talk about the tier finding, so if, if we were to move to a tiered system and is, would that process be defensible? We kind of talked about that before, but in the challenge process, would we have to create a challenge process much like the, I guess, the assessor of property has? You can challenge that, that tier? And then that would be kind of the first question and what you would think about adding that as far as, is that a person? Is that several people? Would you, you know, what would be the anticipation of challenges based on, on our system? Number two, does the current system make more sense to us for budgeting forecasting?
Thank you, Councilman. In regards to your first question, there certainly is a, is a requirement under, under state law that there be a, an, an appeal process or a challenge process that's in place regarding the amount of any bill for a utility fee that's billed for water quality or stormwater. And so there, there currently is one now. As you can imagine, the, by far, the vast majority of those that we receive right now are, are all non-residential because typically the questions we get on residential have to do with, well, what is the fee? And why am I being charged? As opposed to, I think I'm in the wrong tier or I want to be put into another location. All right, and, you know, I, I think you've mismeasured. And so there's, there's not any measurement component right now with where we are because that assumption is that it's, it is statistically correct sample. So that's, that certainly would, would go up in terms of the number of people. We've got one, there's one person right now that only works part-time on, on both looking at change from one year to the, to the next of non-residential properties. I can't say for sure how many people would be needed, but it certainly would, would increase. It would, of course, I'm sure be a larger increase in the initial years as people tried to move themselves down in a tier to a lower, to a lower paying tier. But at some point it would stabilize, but I, I couldn't say for sure how many people that would be. But, you know, I think currently we are, just to put things in, in perspective, there's roughly twenty thousand or so non-residential parcels in the city, but there are eighty thousand total part, total parcels. If all of those suddenly had the right to challenge, that work would definitely go up by multiples and not by fractions in that regard. And as far as, as far as revenue forecasting, we certainly don't have any information or any, any real way to be able to indicate that. I, I know, I'm not aware of anyone that, that has made a move like this to be able to look at anything that they've done most of the time. Those that are, those that are shifting from one methodology to another are tending to go from, from an estimated or measured tier system to a fully measured system or something similar to that. That's, again, most of those decisions for, for, for utilizing the tier in, in most municipalities are, are based on why they, they've done that as cost, for cost savings initially, which are then usually caught up over time where they, as they measure people during appeals, then they, they bill people on that basis. And so the appeals ultimately move them closer to what, what Chattanooga already has.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. I see no more hands, Councilman Henderson. Were you wanting to get back in here or you want to just, if, if not, we, you can take us to the six o'clock mark if you'd like.
Well, I think we probably need a break before we, before we get into our six o'clock. I'll just cut it off there and follow up later.
All right, thank you. And I believe that was the last committee meeting for this afternoon?
It is, sir. I believe we're through for the day. Well, till six o'clock, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Not today.
You heard him, we're through till next week.
Okay. All right, we good till six?